I'd like to. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the terrible tragedy that's happened in Texas. And fourteen students and one teacher who have died, as well as the shooter, an eighteen-year-old, obviously deranged young man. And I just want to reach out to who's on this call and ask you to, by whatever way it's comfortable for you, but to keep all of these victims in your thoughts and in your prayers. And would also ask for a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. Then I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Good evening, everyone. It is six oh one. Actually, can we identify who that person is on the phone? The last digits are eight, seven, six. Okay, Joseph.
They are not identifying themselves?
Hi, this is.
This is Dominic Greco.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have everyone here, myself, Joseph Wilkerson and Tom Moore. This is the Board of Education Finance Committee meeting. Second item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I move that the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee approved the minutes from April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two, regular meeting as presented.
So second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any edits, questions, anything?
No.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
There are votes aye, no opposed, no abstentions. Minutes are approved. Next item under new business is the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget mitigating strategies. We have Mr. Guzman and Ms. Pierce. The floor is yours.
Thank you. This is Easeman and good evening, members of the Finance Committee and others. As you know, the Town Council on May second adopted the town budget, which included the Board of Education budget as well. We had requested a seven-point-three percent increase and Town Council on May second voted to give us a four-point-five percent increase. So the Board budget, as adopted by the Town Council, is forty-eight million, eight-hundred-forty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-three dollars, which is one-point-five million dollars less than what was requested. So we have been looking at a variety of adjustments to the original budget request to bring our request down to the appropriation. There are four areas that we want to talk about tonight, just to give you a sense of some of the mitigating strategies that we're looking at to get us down to that amount. The first two have to deal with actions by the state legislature. And one of the, one of the elements that the state took action on, state legislature took action on, had to do with the magnet school tuition that's paid. In essence, what they've done is they've identified districts that have at least four percent of the student body, student enrollment, going to magnet schools. And we fall into that category along with a whole bunch of other towns, East Hartford, Manchester, New London, I believe is another one. So there's a whole host. And what they've done is, in this piece of legislation, they've capped the amount of tuition that we will be responsible for at four-thousand-four-hundred dollars. So anything above that four-thousand-four-hundred dollars, we would be responsible for. So it's been capped. And the way this works is that the first four, four percent, the first four percent, the district is totally responsible for the bill. Anything above the four percent, the cap applies. And I think we're at a level of maybe ten or twelve percent of our student body is attending. So there are several questions that arise out of this state, this legislation. And the questions are, in fact, what enrollment data are we looking at? Are we looking at the current year, which is about to expire, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, or are we looking at twenty-two, twenty-three data? So those are questions that I know that the State Department of Education, the Office of Grants Processing, is working on in terms of running their simulations and they will, at some particular point, tell us how to calculate that, that, that amount of money. So there's an area here that we know that legislation, it's got to get cleaned up, if you will, by the State Department of Education in terms of what does it mean to the individual districts, Bloomfield included. So that is one element that we're looking at in terms of a mitigating strategy, but to get to an exact number, we can't get there yet. The second piece of legislation had to do with the excess cost grant, the special education excess cost grant. The original proposal that was out there was to reduce the four-and-a-half percent criteria to two-and-a-half, and that would have been wonderful if they had done that, but they didn't. So in essence, what they've done, the excess cost grant is supposed to be fully funded, a hundred percent of what your expenditures are, once you go through the calculation, supposed to be a one-hundred percent funded by the state. Well, the state hasn't done that for forever. They haven't done it. And what it comes down to is that the state legislature appropriates a certain amount of dollars. And when they go through the calculation in the year, the grant is paid off in two parts, one in the fall, one portion of it goes in the fall and the other portion of it goes in the, in the spring. So what it does is it looks at the pot of money that's available. It looks at all the applications that are coming in from the various districts for that money, that grant. And then for us, what that's meant over the last several years is that instead of getting a hundred percent, we get seventy percent. Some years it was sixty-eight percent. So it's in that area of reimbursement. The state legislature basically said that they used, they were going to increase the amount of, they were going to increase the percentage, in our case, from seventy percent to seventy-three percent. And what they do in, so there were three levels of reductions of grant availability, if you will. Some towns were going to get up to seventy-six percent, some towns were going to get up to seventy-three percent, and some towns were going to get up to seventy percent. So there were three tiers and what, where you ranked in those three tiers depended on your, your wealth factor, if you will, your adjusted equalized net grant list, which is what the state uses for determining wealth. And from the latest figures that we have, Bloomfield is in that, the second tier. So we're, we should be going up from seventy to seventy-three percent. However, on May twelfth, we received a communication from the Director of the Grants Processing Office, Kathy Dempsey, from the State Department of Education, basically saying, and I'm going to quote, "Our initial simulations of the formula, using current year data, have indicated there may be an issue with the new language, which would limit our ability to fully expend the funds that had been budgeted." "We have shared our concerns with our counterparts at the Office of Policy and Management and the Legislature." So here's another, this one's a little worse than the first one. This one is a real glitch in, in terms of the funding amount and in terms of the way the legislation was written. So they're working on a fix. That fix may involve the Legislature reconvening at some point. And if they don't reconvene in special session, the next time they're going to convene is going to be next January. So this may be a fix that, I don't know how the state's going to work it, but this just adds to the complication of trying to get some handle on fixed, fixed calculation. So the magnet tuition has a, we need clarification on that one. And the excess cost one, we're also going to need some clarification and that is going to involve the Legislature down, down the pike. So that's a gray area, if you will. The other area that I wanted to talk about in terms of mitigating factors, we also know that the Legislature passed an increase in the ECS grant. The Education Cost Sharing Grant is, is the one that really funds. It's a great, it's the largest fund that the, the state has for districts in terms of grants. Any increase in the ECS from last year will go into the Alliance Grant. And that number is, I haven't seen the final figures yet, but we have an idea of what the, what the amount's going to be. So that figure, and it's not, it's the area of a one-hundred-forty-thousand dollars. So we have to get that calculation. And we'll receive, what happens is we receive communications from the, the Office of Grants Processing in terms of what every town's going to get and all of that and the, so we should be waiting for that as well. But that was the, the Alliance Grant, which is a, an increase to the ECS that's going to go to the district so that we can utilize those funds in, as a mitigating factor when we look at our budget reductions. And then the, the final one that we're looking at right now has to do with staffing. Currently, right now, we have, I think the latest number is thirty-three resignations or retirements. And and they're, they're coming in on a daily basis. We thought we had thirty-two yesterday and then one came in yesterday afternoon. So we're up to thirty-three at this particular point. And how this impacts the budget is that we're looking to the, the difference. So we have a veteran teacher who's been in the district, let's say, for thirty years on the high side in terms of salary. And that teacher gets replaced by a brand-new teacher coming in at the lower rate, the lower salary rate. So you look at the delta, the difference between the person going and the person coming in, and that helps to, obviously helps the budget in terms of meeting the one-point-five-million-dollar reduction that we have to do. So those are four areas that we're currently looking at. We're also looking at a variety of other areas. We went to our insurance broker, which is Brown and Brown, our insurance agent, if you will, and same agent for the town as well, to see what the latest projection was for next year's increase. We're waiting for them. We're hoping that by the end of the week, we'll get a better number, a better percentage increase, a lower percentage increase that we can also apply to the, to the reductions. So that's medical insurance. This year, we have a, a brand-new aspect of medical insurance, because as you know, the teachers have all moved from the Cigna over to the State Partnership Plan. So there's a whole element of, of the district enrollees, if you will, that have moved out of the Cigna plan. And we're wondering if and hopeful that, that alone will offer us reduced percentage increase on the Cigna side, because every other, every other member of the school district is still in the Cigna plan. So we're waiting for that. When we talked to the agent the other day, he was hoping that by the end of the week, this week, we would have something from the underwriters in terms of what that percentage increase could be for next year. So those are some of the elements that we're looking at. We're looking at, and we're still waiting, waiting for more information to come in. But the critical pieces for us is two of the critical, most critical pieces for us is the explanation from the State Department of Education as to what those grants are going to look like, what, how much money are we talking about? The magnet grant, are we using this year's data or next year's data? So a whole bunch of unanswered questions that we're still waiting for in terms of working out the final budget adjustments. I don't know, Alyssa, if you had anything to add to that, or Dominic?
No, I think you covered it.
Yep, you're good, Bill.
Okay, so there's a little bit to unpack here.
You think?
So I guess my first question is, so the, the budget that we got is one-point-five-million less than what, what we asked for? Is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay, so at the end of this school year, are we at zero or are we like in the red? What is that looking like?
Well, we're not going to be in the red. We're going to be in the black. The issue is that it's not going to be a mighty number. You know, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a big number, but certainly if there's, whatever that number is in terms of pre-purchasing, if that's what you're getting at, we'll certainly utilize it. So that's another thing that we're looking at. But it's, you're always hopeful that it's going to be a big balance at the end, but.
Do, do we have a ballpark of what that looks like?
I don't have, I don't know if Dominic has some area. Dominic?
Yeah, Bill.
Do you have? Yeah, yeah, clear. The question is, is there a, is there a ballpark figure in terms of year-end balance that we may have?
It's very, very tight this year, Bill, as, as you mentioned. So if, if anything, it's, it's not going to, it's not going to amount to a lot. You know, we're, we're watching every, every expense that goes out the door every minute. So like I said, things are very tight. So it won't be much, if anything.
Okay.
If there is, we will.
I'm just wondering if we have a ballpark figure, because saying it's not going to be a lot, like that's not helpful to me, only because in the grand scheme of things, like what's a lot, what's a little? Like we have a forty-eight-million-dollar budget, so I'm just wondering what ballpark?
Yeah.
You know, ballpark to me is maybe, you know, a hundred grand.
Thank you.
And, yeah, just so you know, in terms of how we, we've been closing out purchase orders over the last month and a half, right? To get down to any, any encumbrances that were made at the beginning of the year. So let's say a principal at a school decides that I'm going to encumber, let's say, twenty-five-thousand dollars for a set of books, let's say, and and those books are purchased at the beginning of the year, the twenty-five-thousand dollars of the twenty-five, there's expended twenty. So starting in April, we tell the cost center managers, if you have, if you have an encumference out there that you've done with, close out the encumference and that five, that difference, that five-thousand dollars is money that we can use at year-end, as you're suggesting.
So my other question is, okay, I know we don't have from the state, you know, which enrollment period we're going to use as far as, you know, the number of students. Have we done the calculation using our current enrollment numbers?
Alyssa, do you, I think, I think we did a calculation.
Yeah, we did.
With Jason.
Yeah, we did. The issue was that as we were doing it, honestly, it was, it was pretty crazy. As we're doing it, it's changing. We would do it and then like half an hour later, I'd get a call from Jason, hey, I just got this and, and we'd have to update it again. So it was kind of like that for a good, I don't know, three, four days. Right now, the biggest question is, you know, the, the difference in the numbers is pretty significant, what this year's numbers are and next year's numbers are in terms of the kids that they're estimating will go next year into magnet schools versus the kids who are currently in magnet school now. The other question, which I think we got answered, which took a little bit too, was what are we talking about? Just correct magnet schools or every magnet school? You know, how, how do we manage those? How do we handle those? And then the other question was, do we get to pick the four percent or does the state pick the four percent? Because if I'm picking the four percent, I'm picking the ones that are the cheapest. And then they get to pay for the most expensive ones, you know? So all of that has been a process. At this point, I'm trying to see if I can get quickly into this and see if I can help out with some of this. It's just, I hate giving out numbers that is so volatile. It just doesn't feel right. And it is so volatile right now. So we've moved around. We, I think, I think we went from like eight-hundred-thousand to one-point-two-million, back to nine-hundred-thousand, then we went back to nine, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, then we went back up again. So it kind of varied, I guess, somewhere between the eight-hundred-thousand and somewhere between that and like the one-million is somewhere kind of like that. But again, here's the caveat that the state built into the legislation, which is to say that if they run out of funds, let's say that everybody submits all their information and the money that they set aside for this runs out, they get to equitably cut that grant across the board. So maybe I might calculate eight-hundred-thousand, but they ran out of money, so I'm only really going to get six-hundred-thousand. So, and that is a really big caveat that they built into the legislation. So we really won't know until they do their final calculation of how many students are going to magnet schools and what percentage of that population of students is above four percent for every single district that's listed in that legislation. We won't know what their funding will actually accommodate and how much of it will it accommodate our request.
Until October, right?
Yeah, October one, that's when they do it. So, yeah, and so is, it is frustrating. So if they said to us, if they said to us, we're going to use October twenty-twenty-one numbers, they could probably calculate this quicker, but they haven't made that, their mind up about that yet. There's no, there's, there's no like end result on that question yet. So we're kind of waiting on them to let us know what are they using so that we can do our calculation on our end.
And if I could just add to the, there's a difference in the tuitions being paid to the elementary magnets and the upper-grade magnets, upper-grade magnets have a higher tuition rate. So going back to Alyssa's point, we get to choose, which are going to be the first four percent, we're going to choose the, the, the kids who are going to elementary schools. That has to be clarified. And so we have, nothing's come out of the State Department on this at, at this point.
Yeah, it could be that they decide the four percent has to be evenly distributed across all types of magnet schools. You can't just pick only elementary magnet schools, you know, and they might put out that. Who knows?
We don't know.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any questions for, from the committee members?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
My, my first question basically is this. It looks like we're waiting on the state to make the final determination. And my question is, how long, how long are we supposed to wait? And then I'm confused also about another thing is, you know, what year, I guess as I already stated, are we going to use? Are we using last year? Are we going to go into twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three? I mean, there's, there's so much that the state, it seems like it's being held captive by the state right now that we can't move. And then when you gave your, when you gave your four scenarios, the, the two that I, I really understood that really made a lot of sense to me, well, not, well, they made a lot of sense, because like the other two were just, I'm sitting here waiting for answers. Was the, the education cost sharing, because the way I look at that is that's going to apply to every, that's going to apply to everybody. There's not going to be no, no, no difference. And then the other one, this is my question on the other one. I'm, I think you said like, that we had like thirty-three teachers that's going to be retiring this year. So we would get, we would get a savings on, on that. Now, my question to that basically though is, does that, does that savings amount, would that cover part of our one-point-five, I think, million that we are in the hole, that we got to make up for, or no?
Yes, the answer to that question, yes, it will cover. Right now, we do not know how much. And right, and as we speak of today, it's thirty-three, but that list is growing. Each and every day, we get letters of resignations and letters of intent to retire. So that number is growing as we speak right now.
Okay, so then the other thing that I have to say, I mean, you know, people that retire, I mean, I appreciate the authority, they have done everything, that they put their time in. But, but at the same time, we're going to come in, we're going to come in with new people, we're going to come in with new people, probably at a cheaper, well, not probably, it's going to be at a cheaper salary, but we're losing, maybe I'm wrong for saying it, but we're losing a lot of experience.
It's a double-edged sword, you know, in terms of, yes, we losing experienced educators. And that's not only here in Bloomfield, but it's across the region, across the country. There's a, a high number of educators who are going to leave the profession for mainly COVID and other variety of reasons. So yes, it's a double-edged sword. We are losing a lot of talent, but at the same time, we will, it will be a cost savings for the district because we will be hiring people at the beginning of grid, starting salary.
Okay, my last question, this just came to me, so I'm sorry if they only had two. Anybody's been talking an awful lot about the APo money that is coming, that's coming in and et cetera. Can any of that, are we getting any of that and can any of that money be used? The American Rescue Player money?
We said it time and time again, that these are grants and for the most part, you cannot supplant. You cannot use the grant money to supplant and utilize it to offset your budget.
Okay, that'd have been nice if we could. Okay, I'm just trying to, trying to help us out here. Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions?
So I have a question, Madam Chair. My question, I guess, goes back to the, about the staff that are retiring. I know that we have about thirty, what, thirty-one staff that are retiring. And we're bringing staff in at the beginning of the scale. My question is, the number that, in terms of savings, is that also, is, is is the rehire or the new staffing salary? is the rehire or the new staffing salary, are we, are we factoring that in in terms of the cost savings? Or are we talking about now as if, you know, that those staff being off the book as of the date that they're leaving and without hiring?
The difference between uh, any, any salary savings in this area will be used to um mitigate the um, to uh, to get to that one point five.
Okay.
Decrease, yes.
Okay, and are we looking also at um, you know, ways that we could maybe do some restructuring with regard to maybe with, whether it's classroom or um, you know, that kind of thing in terms of, you know, continuing to um down that road with cost savings?
Yeah, we'll look at ev- every aspect of it uh for sure. Um, but uh, the uh, as Dr. Thompson mentioned, uh, that, that thirty-three by the end of uh, this week, maybe up to thirty-six, thirty-seven. So uh, it's gonna, that's gonna be a moving target, but you know, we're looking at uh, uh, what the needs of this, of the schools are, what the uh student ratios are and all of that to make sure that we don't uh, we don't deviate from uh, from that at all. So the restructuring is very limited. Um, but we want to maintain the uh, the low student teacher ratios that this district has known for.
That's right.
Right. Good, okay, good. So that was, that was, you know, kind of where I was going with that because I just wanted to make sure that we weren't um, you know, sacrificing, you know, quality in terms of, you know, the, the way that we um, you know, give our education to make sure that we also save another area. So um, good, thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Any board members on that are not committee members have questions? Howard, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, great. Um, all right, so I guess we, we wait and see what the state has to say. Thank you for the information. We really appreciate it. It's, this is a really tough situation to be in. Um, I'm wondering if, you know, hopefully we don't have to go back to the council, but you know, I think if we do, we do. I mean,
That's the last thing we're going to be doing.
I mean, I think the good news is that we're not the only ones in this position. So there's other towns and cities who are also wondering about how this will impact them. So there's that, I think that that creates an uh, a sort of a momentum behind it. People calling the state and saying, hey, what are you gonna do with this? What are you gonna do with this? Eventually, they'll have to move it because there's, there's lots of people waiting on their answer. Um, so I think that's, you know, I guess if, if we're all in it together, it makes more sense that they're gonna move it faster.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, that's all we have on our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
I second it.
Yeah, all in favor?
I.
Hi. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Um, I have to log off, Mr. Harris. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
This curriculum is next. Um, once again, I want to thank Don and the rest of our members here. Been a tough day for everyone regarding what's going on in Texas. Um, my heart goes out to all the families. Another terrible day. Um, at this time, I am calling the meeting to order of the Board of Education Curriculum Committee. Today is Tuesday, May twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two. It is current six thirty-four. And we have a quorum with Don Harris uh serving as our executive official. Um, consent agenda, approval of the minutes of April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two. Can I have a motion? Can I have a second? Second. Properly move the second. Big questions or edit? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions? Hearing none, the minute hereby approved. Presentations. First year implementation of open court in Bridges K through five. Amberie Conan, Jennifer Dwyer, Sarah Williams, Paul Guzzo, who will start our presentation?
I will. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
So this evening, on the next slide, we will um go through the purpose was um, as Mr. Freeman said, to inform the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee on Year One Implementation of Open Court in our Bridges Math Series. This is a K-five curriculum. This will be a qualitative review tonight. We will talk about the new programs, most importantly, how we assured that they were implemented with fidelity, what we looked for during walkthroughs and what evidence we have, um, what displays we have, what we heard from our students, our staff and our parents. So the process will be to review highlights and instruction by grade level. And the payoff will to provide our Board of Education Curriculum Committee on the effectiveness of year one implementation. On the next slide, just um a quick overview of the open court reading. It's research-based, it's comprehensive K-five reading, writing and language arts curriculum. It uses systematic and explicit instruction, enables all students to master the foundation skills and move to proficiency and achieve reading independence. And what we mean by the foundational skills, um, there's a lot of talk about the science of reading lately. The state of Connecticut um has sent out some white papers on describing what their expectations are. Um, and our series really stresses the foundation skills around phonemic awareness, phonics, word development, vocabulary development, and then moving um into comprehension um and obviously um, reading fluency. And year one implementation included professional development for teachers. Um, lots of coaching videos are available with this series. Um, we include feedback from the team walkthroughs, our team um folks from cabinet and our principals walked through all three of these schools and sat down with the principals and coaches on the school level later and really talked through what we saw and why we saw it and to make sure that there was fidelity. Um, and then we include, there are many teaching resources in both of these programs. On the next slide, I'm going um to ask Mrs. Dwyer to talk about a sample grade one open court lesson plan. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and colleagues. So the snip that you see here um is from the open court overview of the scope and sequence. And notice how the columns are color-coded, green, red and blue. The colors signify the three bands or the areas of focus with green being for foundational skills, red for reading comprehension and blue for language arts. So each grade level is set up similarly and each unit that you see here builds from one to the next. So if you noticed down the example in the red band that visualizing and asking questions are repeated in each section, open court is set on the premise of repeated exposure and that's what helps to build mastery. Rather than past practice of teaching students in silos with mastery individualized. If you notice over in the blue uh band, each lesson span has several se- uh, key components. So vocabulary, the introduction of writing, listening and speaking and penmanship. So students participate in daily instruction in each of these areas and really develops their language art skills as a whole. So far, we've been quite pleased with open court, the inclusivity of each of the ca- uh main concepts. Um, it's the first time that I understand that teachers really have a resource that encompasses all of the major reading elements and then ties it into language arts as well. So what we notice is there's a common language, there's common routines that transcend through each of the bands and it's practiced throughout the day. And next slide, please, for our observations at Laura. So this is one of our first grade classes that you hear and I'll talk about that in just a second. Um, so what we are seeing is that we're coming into the final stretch of the school year um and we've done a lot of reflection about the pl- program, how's it going, how's implementation going? We chose this year to really focus in on our foundational skills. That was the green band. And we found that the instruction is extremely explicit and systematic, which is fantastic and really supported with the science of reading. Um, in my walkthroughs and in our coaching cycles, we're truly focusing on the use of routines to really utilize the best of that science of reading where all of the key components build on one another. Um, we're starting with a cornerstone of phonemic awareness and building through each of the individual steps all the way to the fluency of reading. That's at the core of our instruction. This picture here is Ms. Kemp. She's one of our first grade teachers and she's leading a word-by-word fluency routine. So she literally points to each word of a sentence and she has it set up on her smartboard so that each word pops up as she points. And the students read it quarterly with her and then they go through and they practice rereading it. They practice on phrasing, which helps their intonation, it helps their fluency. So this one component of the lesson lasted about three or four minutes, but it works on all of that repeated reads to help them build their individual fluency. Um, the modeling and um, the repeated practice is something that we've seen all year. Um, it's really a strength of the program and it helps them with their automaticity. We found also the decodable books that were provided to be a tremendous resource. These are smaller colored copies that up for the students, so it's posted on the board and then each student has it with them. So decodables have um each of the phonics skills that they're working on for the individual lesson and the students can highlight, they discuss it, they find different words that meet those patterns um and really has just been tremendous. I noted here um in parentheses that we are no longer teaching students to look at the picture to read a word and there's a reason for that. That past practice really is a comprehension strategy to help students comprehend the words on the page. So rather than teaching students to look at a picture, um, we're really focusing on the patterns and structures of words that create predictable patterns and it truly teaches them to read, not to rely on strategies. We noticed that um the think alouds are quite prevalent too throughout. It's really helping to stu- uh, to build our students' mental schema. And um, I'll be honest, in the beginning of the year, the reflections were not that positive. Teachers found um open court to be very heavily teacher-led and um it did when I went in for observation, you would see less engagement. As we went on through the year though, that actually changed and the participation was more student-driven and student-led um and much more active and we definitely saw the increase in engagement as well. We're currently completing our end of the year testing. Um, teachers are using Fontis and Penel for overall reading um and will be able to compare by week's end the results this year to week, to years past and then we'll be able to really gauge that efficacy. For professional development, we approached the new learning with a multi-level approach. We've done both coaching and formal PD. Teachers engaged in learning sessions individually with the coach. We set them up in teams so that they could observe and have conversations with their colleagues. Um, we do grade level planning and also formal training that was provided by open court, which was fantastic. Uh, we'll continue this model um as it really allowed us to meet all of our teachers individually. Next slide, please.
Now we have Mr. Paul Guzzo, Principal of Metacomet.
Morning, board members and others involved here. Um, here to talk a bit about open court over at Metacomet. Um, Ms. Dwyer, you talked a lot about what I would be talking about too. Um, with the bands here, we also have our our green bands, which in, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Um, in our green bands, when we start in third grade, we're still um doing phonics and just um finishing up phonics from what kids have done in second grade. And then it goes on to um our word recognition and our word analysis skills for third grade and for fourth grade. And what that does, it works on uh prefixes and suffixes for kids. It tells them about Latin root words and um what the um prefixes and suffixes mean. So kids can understand um when we add a, a prefix or suffix, it can either um add on to the meaning of the word or even change the meaning of the word if we have like a suffix like less. Um, so those are some things our kids are learning. Um, when we talk about our comprehension, in the middle band there, our kids are reading and responding to stories. And like Principal Dwyer said in the beginning, it was a lot of teacher-led. Now, we see a lot of kids in groups, reading the story, talking about the story, making connections to the story, um, sharing out with their whole class of their um, their predictions and things that they learn from the stories. Our stories are um both social studies-led and science-led. So if I talk about third grade in the beginning of the year, uh, we're learning about respect. Uh, fourth grade is learning about making a difference. And when we move through the year, um, a science lesson is next where third grade is learning about extreme weathers and uh, fourth grade is learning about adaptations in action with animals. Um, then the third grade learns about a changing nation. Um, and uh, fourth grade learns about the heritage in the home. So these are all stories that relate in, in these themes. Uh, third grade learns about animals and their habitats, si- si- uh, fourth grade does science fair. There's a total of six units and um, there are multiple stories in each of the units that our kids are learning about. Um, just very, I, I mean, the kids are excited about these stories, the teachers are too. In the beginning of the year, it was neat to see the third graders um, when they were learning about a changing nation, cause they were um learning about protests and our kids were, you know, they're writing protest posters of things that they wanted to write about, whether it was about, um, it could have been about the, the George Floyd issues that happened or it could have been about saving animals, but they made protest posters, they did a little protest in our school. Um, so it was neat to see them do this related to the story and actually um, related to current events that are also going on. In language arts, we are learning about um just how to write. Back to the old uh, old ways of writing with kids are um pre-writing. They're uh, you know, coming up with um strategies of how to write, they're having a, a first draft, a second draft, editing and revising it and then finally coming up with a, a final piece that we, we post in our hallways, on our bulletin boards, we share with our families. It was really exciting to see um, this, this program here. Next slide. So I just want to just, the breakdown of the whole program, um, it's a two-hour program. The beginning piece, the phonics and decoding and word analysis is thirty minutes long. Um, and you can see here that, you know, third grade reviews the coding and then moves on to word analysis. Uh, the teachers teach students, just like I said, with uh base roots, wo- wo- words, affixes, um, how to read words fluently and figure out their meaning. Then the meat of the program is sixteen minutes long, it's reading and responding, it's reading our stories. This helps our students build independence to read and they read both narrative and informational texts um and using different comprehension strategies, uh expands their vocabulary. We review vocabulary words for the stories too and we analyze the text, we compare and contrast them with other stories that we've read. And our language arts section lasts thirty minutes and this is, you know, the writing strategies. We're making graphic organizers, checklists, doing a pre-write, draft, revise, edit and publish our writing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guzzo. And next, we'll turn it over to Ms. Williams from Carmen Aires.
I, Mr. Guzzo, did you want to speak about the picture before I went? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I forgot there was a picture here too.
Yeah.
So when you look on the right, in the beginning of our units, we usually have what they call a concept board. So this is a third grade concept board. I'm making a difference. Um, I'm sorry, that's fourth grade, making a difference. So the kids have little sticky notes and um, we kind of look at the stories first and they make predictions and wonder what it is that they're gonna be learning about in making a difference. And after they read the stories, they just kind of confirm what they wrote or, you know, uh, kind of answer the questions of what these sticky notes had with questions about the units that we're studying. The other one, as you see, when I go into a room, you can see on the top, if you, you can probably barely make it out, it's a theme. That's the theme of the unit and the essential question is underneath that, everything on this bulletin board relates to that unit. So when I go in to see, I can make it a little bigger. Um, when we, I go in to observe and see, I want to make sure that that is current and up to date with the stories that they're reading. Um, so it's important for the teachers to weekly review this bulletin board, keep it up to date. So the kids have references to go back to uh when they are reading a story and that's the way I can see that we're on top of um, stories. When I go into every room too, every room should be about at the same story in, in the grade level.
Okay, next slide.
All right, so you're gonna see a lot of consistency all the way from kindergarten up to fifth grade. It's something we've been talking about for years, is looking for that common language for the children. And as you can see here, you can see the green, red and blue bands. So even in fifth grade, the students are still working on foundational skills in the green band. Uh, we are doing a lot of root words, prefix, suffix, affix and it's really helpful. What we've noticed is that working in this section as much as we are, has expanded the vocabulary of our children as well. Our children are able to read more fluently because we are specifically and intentionally focused on this area. I will say this was the biggest shift for our teachers this year. Fifth grade teachers have not typically um been asked to teach um that early literacy skills and strategies of the foundational skills. Now that they are, they've been doing some great, we've had a couple of books that we've purchased. We've been doing some professional development and they are really seeing the difference in the growth of working with the children on those foundational skills, decoding, encoding, uh, looking at the phenoms and phonemes and it's been really wonderful for our children and our staff to get back down to the nitty-gritty of how do you have a child read. Then we move over into the red band of comprehension. And this is something that we've been doing for many years, working on making connections, projections and summarizing. But without that base knowledge of the foundational skills, we weren't moving the children as far ahead as we wanted to. So you can really see a difference now that our comprehension is sticking. We always talk about that stickiness with our children and it's sticking better now that they're understanding and being more fluent uh readers. Um, then you go over to the language arts block, which again, similar to what Mr. Guzzo shared, it's a two-hour block. Language arts where we're working on reading, working, uh, sorry, on writing, working on the writing process, making sure that we're working on grammar. And actually, we can go to the next slide because I talk about that a little bit more in depth over here. Um, this is not unfortunately, you guys are missing my pictures on this. I'm not sure what happened, but there were some gorgeous pictures on this one. Um, where we were looking at the children, working together, utilizing strategies across the content areas of think, pair, share, um, which is something that you'll see also in Bridges later. The children really diving into the book, looking for the text features, looking in, pointing out the words for the vocabulary, which has been extremely helpful. We also, just to talk about that foundational block again, every classroom, kindergarten all the way up to fifth grade, has the A alphabet, what you might think of as an alphabet chart all the way from A to Z, but this is different. It has much more on it. It talks about the sounds and it's really like a sound chart, which has been extremely helpful for our learners of EL, our learners of special education, and it's very encompassing. The amount of intervention that we've been able to build in with this program has been extremely helpful as well.
Okay, so I am, I'm going to go very quickly on the overview um because of the time and I think I'm going to turn it right over um to Mr. Guzzo because many of these um components of the Bridges program and how we implemented it, you will hear from the principals. Mr. Guzzo, next slide. While you're um muted.
There you go.
There you are.
Right, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, so the components of the program here, I I love this program, the Bridges, and I also love the Open Court. In this program, the kids are given three books, as you see here. The first book is the student book, that's the book that they work on with the teacher. Um, and the program is broken up into two parts to it. Um, just like Open Core had three different sections, um, this section has two. You have the number corners, which deals with the calendar, which you'll see on the bottom left. And also that book in the middle is a number corner book that goes with the program. That program, that part of the program in math lasts about fifteen to twenty minutes long. Um, the main part of the program, which is the Bridges program, Bridges Math, that's the first book that you see and which also has these word resource cards, that's what you would consider your your regular math program. Um, and and that's a book that the kids will work on with their teachers, both of the two books. That program lasts about sixty minutes long. The Home Connection book is the homework book. So that would relate to the first book that we have and any homework given to the kids comes out of that Home Connection book. Um, so when we're talking about the Bridges program, not the um, not the number corner one, but the Bridges. It has games and activities for our kids to use and the games and activities relate to our kids knowing their their basic facts. They is what it is. It makes basic fact fun, adding, subtracting, multiplying and dividing depending on the grade level and really solidifies their knowledge of basic facts. It has literature related to our um our lessons in math and it uses a lot, lots of manipulatives. Right now, we're seeing our kids, you know, they're in fractions, so they have fraction bars and and we're using egg crates for fractions too. So lots of manipulatives um to use for our kids.
Next slide, we'll go back to Ms. Dwyer.
So like Mr. Guzzo, I will tell you, I am a complete fan of Bridges. Um, this year with all the manipulatives and the learning, um, and this is, this is a true statement. I observed pretty close to one hundred percent engagement for each of the Bridges lessons observed. Um, the kids are just engaged with it, they love it. Um, we are working on developing mathematical understanding through the active hands-on learning. The manipulatives are helping to bring the students from concrete understanding to a deeper abstract understanding with deeper number sense. Um, we're doing that on a level that paper and pencil never could have. Um, these practices really support culturally relevant pedagogy and it levels the learning playing field for our students. Um, like Mrs. Williams was saying about Open Court, um, the supports that are embedded for EL and special ed students is fantastic. Um, Bridges like Open Court uses repeated exposure to develop mastery. It also supports generalizing knowledge and especially a number corner. So number corner is a daily routine. Um, the students apply previously taught concepts to solve problems, identify patterns and predict possible outcomes to mathematical problems. The teachers and students love it. Teachers want to teach number corner all day. Um, it's actually really impressive when you go in the rooms. Um, I went into a second grade classroom and listening to the students discussing rectangles, comparing them to the shapes of arrays and how the shape of the array can actually help them to better understand multiplication as repeated addition. And this was just complete student-led conversation. It's just, it it's actually exciting to watch. The discourse has just been phenomenal. Um, in this picture here, there's a group of second graders and they used M and M's to sort them and graph them. And in their graphs, they use the numbers that they came up with to actually help them solve addition and subtraction problems. Um, so just really exciting application to see. Within this lesson, the teachers worked on four different standards and it reinforced previous learning too. Um, the cyclical nature of Bridges really helps to provide the application across different scenarios. We found that um grade level collaboration has been immensely important. Um, unfortunately, with all of the different books and components to Bridges, it takes a while for the teachers to get familiar with it and that was a piece of feedback we received early on and really held true through to the middle of the year. So even though they're developing more comfort and they're getting better with it, that time with their colleagues to really just go through and know where things are, it is truly priceless for them. We also noticed that planning took a lot longer than in years past, so you're not copying worksheets anymore and giving them to students. It's about counting out objects, making sure you have everything you need for your different programs, for the different work centers. Um, it really is a lot. And it requires a lot of the teacher's time. So one thing that we want to do in the future is not only continue with our professional development and the time that teachers have together, but is really to set aside time for the teachers to have that collegial time and to make sure that they are well-prepared for their lessons because there, there's so much to offer that we want them to reap those benefits. Um, and and really seeing just how much our little owls are going to learn with this program. So it's exciting.
Thank you, Mrs. Dwyer. Next slide. Mr. Guzzo.
Um, so Ms. Dwyer was talking about the different parts of the program. So I wrote down here the different parts that we have. Now, keep in mind that we don't do every part every day. The calendar grid in number corners, which again lasts between fifteen to twenty minutes, is done every day and I'll have a picture of it next. I want to just show you what that calendar grid looks like. There's another thing called a calendar collector, which will um promote deep learn um, deep understanding of estimations and counting, values and measurements and data. We have computational fluency. These are the games and practice for our um, you know, our kiddos when we're, when we want to learn, you know, um, like it says here, you're the basic fact skills. Um, there's number lines, which we learn on a number line, how to use fractions, how to skip count, number sense, uh, comparing and ordering of whole numbers and fractions. And also problem solving, we do a lot of that in our number corners. We do problem solving in a in a whole group with a teacher and we also do it in small groups with kids and they share out uh as a class. In the Bridges program, the sections are problems and investigations, which a teacher poses a problem to the students in a whole group. They have time to think and they brainstorm how to solve the problem together as a class. There's workplaces, which um offers ongoing practice with skills and those are a lot of partner games. The skills again are the um, you know, uh basic fact skills. There's math forums, we're giving our kids time to talk and discuss a problem that we give them. Um, there's problem strings, this is a really fun one. If we had more time, I'd go through all of these. Um, and there's also assessments that we do um in our lessons. But let's go to the um, next slide. I'll show you a uh calendar grid or a calendar. Um, can you zoom in on one of them? It doesn't matter which one. So when I go in the rooms in the morning, uh, I wish you could see it a little bit better, but can you zoom a little bit more there? Can you, can you bring it up? All right. All right, this is third grade right here. Thanks for moving that up. Um, and you can see the kids are looking at different patterns. So each day, a different card gets turned over. So I'll go in and I'll ask them what they noticed about the card and what the pattern is. There's many different types of patterns here. Um, you can see that when uh day one is, there's a a square there, um, geometric shape. And then you can see the next day, um, there's a little shape. And then on the third day, if you take the big shape and the little shape away, it 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 comes out with a, that that's what's missing out of that piece. And there's, there's many different patterns. It could be a color pattern, it could be some kind of a shape pattern. And the kids have to, um, before we turn over a card, we have to guess what we think the card will be and why. There's a lot of discourse with the kids on that and what their predictions are. And there's not just one type of um a pattern. It could be, it could be many, like many different types, some that I don't even think of and the kids have these just great, great ideas of what they are. This is a fourth grade one. Um, and in the fourth grade one.
Mr. Guzzo, I I think we have to move on. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We're going to have to move on so we don't miss.
Thank you. Yes.
Williams will finish. This is the last slide that we have.
So I just want to point out a couple of things here. The use of manipulatives, again, all the way up through fifth grade. You could see students at the top in that picture. They are into it, they are utilizing what's in front of them to help support their growth and their learning. Uh, kids are learning to love math again through that games component of Bridges, which is really wonderful. It's less um nerve-wracking to them when they can play in a game and it doesn't feel as um it doesn't feel as uh as large as it is when kids think about math. Our staff is receiving professional development with live staff virtually. Also, Bridges has an incredible library of videos where staff is able to view and watch together to make sure that they understand what it is that they're teaching and how Bridges is asking them to teach. Um, the program also offers a lot of anchor charts and visual supports around the room. One thing that I'm loving when I'm walking around uh doing my walkthroughs or my observations is just how print-rich the classroom environments are with both Open Core and Bridges. And really, like I said before, at Open Core, there's so much focus about those great instructional practices across content areas. The children are very comfortable working with their partners, being verbal with what they're saying, using the vocabulary terminology that they've learned and they're doing that in each of the subject areas. One last thing you could see on the board, I just wanted to showcase this. Our teachers are putting the uh objectives for the day in kid-friendly language so children understand what their learning task is and what they're going to do by the end of their lesson in ways in which we've not done before. Children are really involved in their learning, they can speak to it, they can tell you what it is. So it's not just the teacher is sitting there teaching, the children are very much able to say what they're coming away with on that day and in that unit.
And in conclusion, um, we just wanted to thank you and also point out again that both of these programs, Open Court and Bridges, help to support the competencies that we chose in Portrait of a Graduate to be, for our students to become critical thinkers, problem solvers, adaptable and communicators. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I can feel, uh, I think our entire room here can feel your excitement and your, and the energy that you're all putting into this program and I appreciate it. Um, we only have a few seconds left before we turn it over to our next committee. I just, I did have two questions quickly. Um, regarding, you'll have some additional results regarding what you've seen from the beginning of the year to the end for us at some point. I'm sorry. No. You'll, you'll be seeing some um additional, you'll be giving us a report on the results by the end of the year at some point.
Um, we stopped a lot of the testing because we were doing um S back, but we're going back to just complete some of our I-ready scores. So we'll have some at the end of the year.
Right. And my, my last question is, what's our engagement with our parents? Are our young people going home? Um, you know, reading to our parents uh so they can hear and assist with them, especially with our younger people, with their reading skills?
Right. And I think um
And penmanship and of course with our penmanship.
Yeah. Mrs. Dwyer, you want to talk a little bit about answering that with the younger kids going home? I know you just opened up a library outside of your school.
We did. So I will um just be quickly, both programs have these wonderful parent component letters that are sent home. So one thing that we're working on Laurel this year is not just engaging parents in academic discussions, but providing background knowledge. Like, why is it that we're doing what we're doing? Why are we asking questions a certain way? Why are we posing certain um uh stimulus to children in certain ways? And these letters are fantastic. They really describe that for parents. It it was huge to me, a great component. Um, and then those take-home books, the ones that I was talking about earlier, those go home with the students and we really encourage repeated reads for development of fluency. So that's another great component in use for those. Um, and then yes, Mrs. Cullen was speaking of our little free library that we just opened at the school. We unveiled it. And we are promoting um community read aloud. So we're offering just twenty-four access, twenty-four hour access to books where parents can just drive up and and take books and share them. So it's been a great addition to kind of the literacy-rich environment that we're promoting.
Well, I want to thank you. I want to thank staff. Um, any additional questions before we um adjourn? Robert?
I want, I want to make a quick, quick statement uh that uh I am duly impressed with the work that has been done and I thank everyone involved for the presentation. And the only thing I could kept running across my mind as I'm hearing uh the presentation is Bob Icke's uh famous words. It's got rigor. It's got rigor all the way through from
Go ahead, Robert.
Go ahead, Robert. Just waiting to see the results. Well, it's extremely, extremely hard work.
You, you're seeing the results da- daily. You're seeing the results. So I'm, I'm, I'm impressed. Thank you.
All right, any other final questions? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Properly moving second, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. The time now is seven oh eight and we are going to move forward with um opening up for our policy committee meeting. Um, looks like we do have a quorum. And I'd like to first start out by uh approving the minutes. Can I have a a motion for the approval of? Thank you. A second? Sorry, can I get a second?
Second.
Perfect, thank you. Um, all in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye, looks like the ayes have it. Thank you. Um, there was no, no additions or anything or no corrections needed for that? I should have asked that before I took up the vote. It looks like we're, we're all set. We're good. Okay, thank you. All right. So first thing on our agenda, uh, we're going to move to old business. We're going to have uh Mr. Guzman, if you can come up and um uh give us the second reading for uh for our policy, Title IX Personnel Students.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Um, this uh, this policy was brought to the um to the policy committee back on uh April twenty-sixth for a initial reading and went to the Board of Education on May tenth for a first reading before the board, the full board. And now we're going through um, as Mr. Wilkinson said, a second uh review at the policy committee level. The reason for this Title IX um policy is the Office of Civil Rights back in November two thousand eighteen. Proposed new rules to amend Title IX. Regulations. Those regulations. Became effective on August fourteenth of two thousand twenty. The new regulations define sexual harassment as conduct on the basis of sex. That satisfies one or more of the items listed. On page two of the policy. Page two of the policy, you'll see the three areas that. That we're talking about at the top of the page there. And. The, the, the policy goes forward basically to ensure that if any complaint. Issued. Regarding sexual harassment. Allegation regarding sexual harassment will be responded to promptly. In a manner that is not deliberately indifferent. And. We've taken steps to. To amend. The, the regulations that go along with this policy. To ensure that. That, that occurs in a, in a quick manner. The policy and the provisions require employees receive a report. Of prohibitive conduct based on sex. To notify the Title IX Coordinator. Title IX Coordinator, by the way, is Mr. Dan Maletti, the HR Director. So, and. Dan is well aware of this policy. Change that we're requesting. And he's also reviewed new. Regulations going forward relative to this policy. As I mentioned before. Schools must report or respond to harassment that occurs in a school quickly. And. Final rule. Issued by the Office of Civil Rights allows parents and guardians of K-12 students to file complaints as well. And the rule requires schools to provide supportive measures to students with a, without a formal complaint. So this policy and the Office of Civil Rights. Regulations requires extensive training, record-keeping and documentation to follow along with this, this new policy. And we're prepared to do that. It also requires that employees at the school district be trained to recognize potential sexual harassment. As well, and. The Title IX Coordinator and other employees involved in the formal complaint process. Must be trained. And we have a training program every two years required by Connecticut law regarding sexual harassment. So this policy, as I mentioned before, is the result of a regulation adopted by the Office of Civil Rights. It's one that, the policy itself is one that's been. Provided by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Policy Department. And we're putting it forward to the Policy Committee for approval. So with that, answering the questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Are there any questions from the, from the Policy Committee?
Time for me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fryman, can you give us the motion?
Yes. I move to recommend to the Board of Education. For adoption, Policy four zero 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 point one slash five one four five point four four, Title IX Personnel slash Students.
Second.
Thank you for the motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving this?
Aye.
Aye, okay, looks like the ayes have it, thank you. We are going to move to new business, Policy for Initial Reading, Talented and Gifted Students Program. Mr. Guzman in the floors here.
Thank you. Public Act twenty-one ninety-nine, one ninety-nine. Passed by the General, Connecticut General Assembly. Is an act that was called, an act concerning various revisions and additions to statutes relating to education. Section two of that public act. Required local and regional boards of education to develop a policy. For the equitable identification of talented and gifted students. The legislation further said that such policies shall require. The use of multiple methods of identification of gifted and talented students. That are in compliance with guidance provided by the State Department of Education. This is a mandated policy by. By the public, by the public act. The, the laws and regulations governing gifted and talented education are embedded within. Those that are pertaining to special education in Connecticut. So that requires. The whole process requires a PPT to occur. And to identify gifted and talented students, there's certain definitions that are included. In the policy, talking about children with extraordinary learning ability. As well as those students with outstanding talent in creative arts, which could be music, visual arts or performing arts. This policy incorporates that language. Extraordinary learning ability pertains to academic achievement and intellectual creativity. Whereas outstanding talent in the creative arts pertains to achievement in music, as I said before, the visual arts and performing arts. Districts are mandated under this public act. To have a process for the referral identification and evaluation of public school students. The Planning and Placement Team is required to be used to evaluate and identify gifted and talented students. And parents must be provided in writing notice that their child has been referred through the PPT. For consideration. I just want to add that. The talented and gifted program that we have embarked on. Meets all the elements of this public act. Mrs. Cullinan has reviewed the policy. And indicated to me that. All the elements in the policy have been adhered to. By the process employed over the last several weeks. To identify children for the Bluefield Talented and Gifted Program. So with that, recommend going to the Board of Education with this balance.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Really quickly, can you speak to what that process looks like in terms of identifying students?
Yeah, I'm gonna give this over to Anne Marie real quickly so she can go to it because she's lived and breathed this actually over the last couple of weeks. So Anne Marie?
Okay, so we began the process shortly after the New Year. And we started with the giving a, it's called the Naglary test. Which helped us. Evaluate our students. And we did over six hundred and fifty of them because we evaluated students from grade. Six. From grades five through eight. We are completing grades three, four. Three and four. After S-Back is completed. And we just did the nomination meetings for GEMS. So the nomination meeting. Is a committee. That includes myself. Our two talented and gifted teachers, the building principal, school psychologist, school counselor, the nominating teacher. And our consultant from the University of Connecticut also sits in. And this meeting. Goes through three areas, the beginning of it. We describe what the process will look like. The talented and gifted brings up the child who has been nominated by his or her teacher. And we look at three areas, we look at above-average ability. We look at creativity and we look at commitment to tasks. And those three areas are discussed by the nominating teacher. And we ask questions and we look at a nominating portfolio that is on our. It is on our website. And it includes information on the student. We look at S-Back scores, we look at grades. We look at surveys around giftedness. And this helps the team discuss the child and then support identifying the child. You know, through the decision-making process of where the child would fall. Whether in tier one, remaining in general classroom enrichment, tier two, which is support. In the classroom for creativity training. And, or tier three, which is our pull-out program. Those students who. Are recommended for tier three. We follow up with a parent meeting. And we've held one already for Case and CAMHS. And parents are a part of. The accepting the program. They have an opportunity to ask questions. We share what the program is all about, what the. Recommendations are. And also what our expectations for the students are. So we have started Case and CAMHS, the students are being pulled out. Parents. Came to a meeting, a Zoom meeting, where we explained everything to them. And then they give permission. We do, the students who are nominated and go into tier three are actually, are, receive a diagnosis of talented and gifted. And they are in the state bank as OO-three, which is the diagnosis for talented and gifted. So it is a legal. Operation along with an educational. Operation, so as Mr. Guzman said, we do follow all of the requirements that the state has required. Any comment?
Are there any questions from, from the Policy Committee?
No, I'm good.
I'm fine.
Okay, any, any other members have questions or concerns? Okay, Mr. Fryman, can you read the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to recommend to the Board of Education an initial reading of Policy six one seven two point one. Talented and Gifted Students Program.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, the ayes have it. Alright, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Guzman and Ms. Cullinan for that. At this time, I don't have anything else on the agenda and I think it's time to go home.
Motion to adjourn?
So move second.
Everyone have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Good night, Happy Memorial Day.
Happy Memorial Day.